Good evening, my name is Zahra Roach. And I would like to welcome you to the October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the city council on changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, considering the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. To perform our duties, the Planning Commission holds formal public review via public hearings and workshops. The city council then takes the testimony, facts, findings, and our recommendations that we create and make the final decision on those matters. So to begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the meeting clerk to take role, please.
Tanya Bowers, present. Joseph Campos.
Present.
Paul Mendez. Ann Jordan. Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myrum.
Present.
Zahra Roach.
Present. Pam Ransier.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Thank you, and if you would all like to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I would like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on channel PSC one nine one on Charter Cable. We will be rebroadcasting several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the city's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and you will make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask people in the audience to please turn off their cell phones or any fellow commissioners who have forgotten to do so. For those present this evening when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please come forward to the podium, speak your name clearly into the microphone, state your name and address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires that public meetings and hearings like the one being held this evening not only be fair but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in a hearing or a decision which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. So first, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Looks like that's a no. Let the record show there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission members hearing of any items on the agenda? So I don't see anybody. Let the record show there were no declarations. This evening, we have one, two, three, four, five, five public hearing items and some other business, and so to be able to get through all these agenda items, I will ask that speakers try to keep their talking to about five minutes, their comments. We value your input as a Planning Commission and it helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to the city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the record that the city council will use then to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. So the next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from A, August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. So I trust that commissioners have had a chance to look at this and I would entertain a motion. I move to approve the minutes from the Thursday, August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
So, sorry. So it was moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner Cochran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so let the let the record show that was passed unanimously. Now let's go on to B, which is the approval of minutes from September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. And I would entertain a motion for that.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, second. Pam Ransier. I gotta commit that to memory. So it was moved by Commissioner Myrum, seconded by Commissioner Ransier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that it passed unanimously. Is there anything else that we need to know about these approval minutes? Alright, so then let's move on to our public hearing items. A code amendment, planned unit development revision. And I think what I'll do is hand this over to Jacob Gonzalez for reintroduction.
Hi, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. The planned unit development has been a topic that we've been discussing, actually since two thousand seventeen. At that point, there was some considerations of providing more clarity and definition for the open space requirement. About last year, around this same time, we brought the PUD ordinance back to your attention. At that time, it was joined with the shared frontages that you passed. What we've gone back and have done some incremental improvements and changes to the PUD ordinance. So tonight's item is just for discussion and we'd appreciate any comments and feedback, but you'll notice that there's been some significant changes to the actual ordinance. And what we've intended to do with the ordinance is to number one, decrease the minimum site area required. The current requirement was quite prohibitive for developers and folks to actually take advantage of. And the purpose of the PUD is to allow some general flexibility with the municipal code to do some innovative housing development, provide diversity of housing stock for the community members here with the benefit that there's open space and community park and amenities included with the PUD itself. And so we can go kind of through one by one with some of the primary or the bigger changes are, if that's okay. Some of this, you'll remember, you saw it the last time this was brought back to you. There's some references to what other jurisdictions are size and larger have done with their minimum site area and also with the open space requirement, so that's still back in this report. But if you look at the second document, which is the actual PMC code itself, you can see the actual changes made to the right side. I believe you have that same copy as well. There were some minor changes to the purpose itself, just to bring this up to date and make sure that when this is changed, it'll also be fit for the next duration of appropriate time. The purpose of the chapter has an emphasis on the diversity of housing style. You'll also notice on the relationship to adjacent areas, there was an emphasis placed on street connectivity because even though their private streets are permitted in the PUD, we don't want that to deter from connectivity in the community. So wanted to make sure that was added in there. Those are just some general language changes there. But where we get to the bigger changes is to the minimum densities and the site area required of the PUD itself. So on page two of the ordinance, right under twenty-five, one forty, zero, three, zero, and on that top of the second page, you'll see the minimum site area required. The, this table's got the comprehensive plan land use designations. And the second column is the minimum site area. So for low-density residential, that's been decreased to two. And for the other three, it's been decreased to none, which we've seen in quite a few other jurisdictions. This is similar to what you saw in the prior, the prior drafts of this. The next biggest change would be to the densities. If you remember the first few attempts that the ordinance amendment had a maximum lot size and the intent with that was to ensure that if you're gonna develop a PUD, that you develop it with required densities that relate back to the comprehensive plan. After some discussions with staff, we thought that was a little bit too prescriptive, so we've gone back and just put out it's a minimum density requirement. So you'll see that on the next page, under density requirements, you'll see the minimum units per acre that correspond to the land use designations as provided in the city comprehensive plan. So six dwelling units an acre for low-density residential, that aligns with what we require in the comprehensive plan, and the rest is follows. Now, for mixed residential and mixed residential commercial, we have a range. And so we picked the midpoint, just to be fair on that. We didn't wanna be too overbearing on this. We still want this to be used, that's the purpose of it. So you'll see that that's twelve for mixed residential. The high density is twenty-one dwelling units an acre. The minimum density of high density is twenty-one dwelling units an acre, so that aligns. And then the same with mixed residential commercial. The density bonus remained the same, but now there's clarity as how to actually, how you qualify for the density bonus. So right now in the PMC, there's a density bonus of twenty percent, but there's not much clarity as to what you do to get that bonus. So this hopefully protects us and whoever lives there as to how you would qualify for that. And that's done through the inclusion of the amenities and open space requirements, a little bit about what they can include and what they don't include. And for instance, we want open spaces to be those areas that are available to all members of the community, whether they're renters or owners, however their development is, is celled or rented. What we don't want them to be is what we've seen in other jurisdictions and they catch on later is the balcony, right, would count as open space, and obviously that's only available to the tenant of that unit. So we wanted to make sure that that wouldn't be something that occurs here. And we think we've done that here with the open space requirement. The lot size remained the same. The next biggest would be the public street and private street standards. And this took some coordination and collaboration with our Public Works Department. So currently, PUDs allow private streets. The past municipal code has no standard for private streets. So that can be challenging for us for what to approve. Now we have at least a bare minimum and based on conversations and recommendation from Public Works, they wanted to ensure that if there is a private street, that it would meet local access collector standards with some variances to a lot of flexibility. So that is now in here. And I believe those are the, yeah, actually after that, there's not many more changes to the rest of the code goes into how the permitting process goes for this. So what we'd like is, is any, obviously welcome any input, comments, or questions from the Planning Commission or anybody in the audience. Again, our hope with this is to make sure that it's a usable tool for the community and developers to use to provide housing for the city of Pasco. As y'all know, we're growing quite rapidly. That's not expected to change anytime soon. The biggest change here would be the definition of private streets, open space requirements, and obviously the density and minimum site area requirements.
Okay, well, let's open it up for public audience to comment and then we can make some comments from commission to finish it off. Anybody coming up? Alright, well, it looks like nobody's taken on that, so go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
Thank you. Great job, Mr. Gonzalez. Just a question with the guest parking, which I see on the last page of the, oh, it's not the last page, pardon me, I'm not sure what page it is. But it is under, it's number twelve for twenty-five, one four oh oh eight oh. And I believe what I see here is one guest parking shall be provided for every three dwelling units. And did you find it?
I did not find it.
It's at the top of the page in the red section. And it is before, right before twenty-five point oh four oh point oh nine oh. Fourth to the last page.
Okay, there might be an omission of text there. That might be when there's no off-street parking included. So I'll have to go back and make sure that it's, we're not missing any language in that one.
Oh, well, actually, my question was not that. It was just, is this on par with, with what I'm seeing in some of the developments? Like I think it's the Street of Vincenzo, north of Broadmoor, around ninety. And I know what they do there. There's duplexes side by side and then for every, I don't know how many houses, then they have like a section in between them.
Yeah, yeah. No, I don't know if it's on par with that. I suspect that it's far from on par with that. So this would be a greater requirement than what the real life example.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions from commission members to staff about this?
So I was curious about some of the, just comparisons or how you arrived at the changes. Like what we were going from, it looks like for the minimum site area, we're going from ten to two. So that's a pretty big drop. And then, you know, like Kennewick's five, I think, sounds like Yakima's too. So maybe you're matching Yakima. I'm just curious, what was the, is there rationale behind? It seems like a pretty drastic drop.
Yeah, it is. And I think obviously the ten acres was too big, so we needed to decrease it. So taking a look at our surrounding jurisdictions and those that are larger size, we should, the challenge with looking at maybe what's going on across the river or locally here is, is we're dealing with very rapid development. So we're growing faster than Yakima. We're growing faster than most of the cities in the state. So we need to, I guess, provide some sort of thought into, this may work today, but will this help us or hinder us in the future? And that's kind of the hope with decreasing this to the two acres for the low-density residential.
Same question for, I didn't see a comparison on the minimum units per acre for other areas. And I was just curious about the rationale. I mean, it seems reasonable, but you know, six units per acre for low-density and then twelve, twenty-one, seventeen. But I wasn't, it's hard for me to know, how does that compare, right?
So the PUD, right now, you could build almost within reason, as long as you're close to the underlying land use, you can build to that, but there's nothing saying that you can go under that. So the, the hard part would be if a, today, somebody with ten acres could develop a PUD in a mixed residential zone at a very low density and there's nothing to protect us from not allowing that. And obviously, the purpose of the higher-density zones or mixed residential zones is to allow for higher units to be developed. So this kind of protects us to have this in place.
Is this, I guess what I was saying though, is this the, do other areas, cities, don't specify this too? And so they have the same kind of weak, potential weakness and we're trying to nip that in the bud or?
You know, I actually didn't see this in other minimum densities. I looked and I'm actually surprised. Maybe they are not worried about it. But at least it's in here to protect us whether it's ever needed.
So that's why there's no comparison, because they're not thinking about it, maybe.
Could be, yeah.
Thanks.
I had a question about permitted uses. I noticed that it said, any uses permitted by this title are allowed except combinations of residential and industrial uses. Could you perceivably have a development that's mostly commercial? Or is there kind of a expectation that it would, you know, be mostly residential? You know, what, what sorts of options are available? Do you have a predominantly commercial PUD?
You could if you met the minimum density requirement. And so obviously, this one actually didn't change. Now, in my research, some of the cities, actually Spokane, Yakima, Bothell in particular, they have separations in their PUD ordinance that specify if this is a mixed-use PUD. This is a mixed residential, commercial PUD. And their code starts to get real complex at that point because then there's different standards for street widths and all that kind of thing. Open space requirements change. Rather than go that far, I think this is a good, a, I mean, it's good, but it's also a big change in the PUD ordinance. And rather than get that prescriptive, I thought it was safe that just to leave this as is. And it's probably more along the lines of if you want a PUD full of townhomes or, you know, a duplex and single-family detached, right? It allows for that kind of diversity, which is a good thing for the community. But it does separate, right? You can do an industrial use and a residential use. And I saw that in a lot of PUD ordinances across the state.
As I was looking at, you know, the private streets and thinking about that part of this language, PMC, I was wondering, what have city staff found in the older parts of the city that do have private streets? What are the difficulties with those standards? And has it been changed or written in a way so that it might build upon how we can do it better in these PUDs?
Well, I think, I think the part, that's the reason for actually having that much information in the PUD ordinance is so that if this is a, and I believe in here, it's also clarified that it's appropriate when you can't meet the minimum density. So allowing a smaller street or a private street is going to be a part of your PUD development is because without that, you could not meet the minimum density requirement. So places more of an emphasis on providing housing than perhaps the, what we're used to in terms of right-of-way street widths. In general, I think the challenge of the private streets is who's gonna maintain them. And we face that every winter when we have snowfall or ice. Emergency access is something that needs to be considered. So that's why this still would allow for fire trucks and vehicles to get in and out around the PUD without any kind of challenge. Hopefully, this is, is able to be used by folks wanting to use a PUD.
And people who are developing PUDs, they typically do use private streets because of the density is different or variable?
Well, I don't think we have many examples actually here in Pasco. I know Ivy Glades and Sun Willows. And those have private streets. And I think part of the challenge is, especially this past winter or last year, there was some significant snowfall.
There's no challenges with like collecting trash or that sort of thing with the private streets?
I'm not aware of that, but it's something that we can look into. Maybe if that needs to be in this, then we could include something like that.
And I'm not aware of any problems with, it's, it's a maintenance. If it's a problem, it's because of maintenance and snow removal.
Okay, so I know on the western side of Pasco, south of I- two, by that Shell gas station, there's, you know, Tristis Prep, they have some private streets behind the houses. And how has that done? Because that's a newer development for the city. Are you familiar with the neighborhood?
I am. As a matter of fact, we brought that up at a meeting today for a totally different subject. But those are, you're right, they're private alleys. And they have a homeowners association that maintains those. And Ivy Glades has a homeowners association also, as does Sun Willows. Problem is, is they either are weak in addressing issues like a big snowfall that takes place in the space of one or two days. And they probably don't have a contingency or a standby for a, you know, snow removal, for example. And then when it comes time to collect on the maintenance bill, they probably have difficulties collecting.
Okay, thank you for answering that question. We don't want to add anything into this about HOAs for private streets. Would that be too prescriptive?
If, I am sure Mr. Gonzalez would agree, but if necessary, then, you know, we'll have to come to terms with that issue. They are not a perfect solution to a maintenance issue, but they're better than, you know, just washing your hands and letting it go.
Okay, and then the open space requirement is, suggestion is ten percent of the gross land?
Yeah, that was significantly decreased as well. That, that number was much higher than some of our rural jurisdictions out in Franklin and Benton County. So that one, we felt was necessary to change. And I believe ten percent was what was brought to the commission in two thousand seventeen. And then that was, was a continued item.
Have we seen anywhere in Tristis a planned unit development which encompasses a combination of these land use classifications instead of just one, like low, low-density residential? But is there one that's done a combo of like a mixed density?
Canyon Lakes and Kennewick.
The only one I know of is Canyon Lakes and Kennewick. And they use both mixed densities and mix of land uses. So that was all, there's a long story for Canyon Lakes, but it was master planned. So it was six hundred forty acres, it was square mile. And so a lot of things happened to make it fail, like the economy. But it, it didn't. It, it saw through to pretty much its original design and intent, which included a mix of densities, a lot of open space because of the golf course, and a mix of commercial and residential land uses.
Okay, thank you for answering that. It's a good example to have. Any other questions or comments right now about the standards that we have right for us for planned unit development? Thank you for all the work that went into this. This was quite thorough. I appreciate that. And just for clarification, under the public street standards, public, it says a PUD improvement will not be allowed where the property owner does not control both sides of the proposed roadway. And that is meaning of a private within the PUD.
Yeah, I believe so. This was what was asked to be included by our Public Works Department. So I wanted to make sure that was, I'm sure they had proper reasoning for wanting this to be included in the language of the ordinance.
So the way that I read that was just problematic in that I was thinking about, well, what happens if you're a major arterial and across the street, then that doesn't quite make sense to me in this reading of it.
Yeah, and I'll get clarity. I'll ask for some clarity on this and provide any more information at the November Planning Commission meeting, if that's okay.
So if there aren't any more comments, Commissioner Public, then I'd entertain a motion to, are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, no motion on this one, but we're just seeking some input from the commission.
Well, then we will see it again in November.
And it is a continued public hearing, so we'll have to open the hearing.
Okay, so let's open the public hearing. I did ask for those in the audience if they wanted to come up and speak to it. No one came up.
Commissioner, I think we can entertain a motion then to continue the public hearing.
Sure.
I move to continue the public hearing to the November second, or no, November Planning Commission meeting.
Sure, that works. Second. Okay, so it was moved by Commissioner Jay Campos, seconded by Commissioner Bowers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right? Any opposed? Looks like it passed unanimously, so we'll see it back in November Planning Commission.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So on to B, which is another code amendment for the Flood Plane Management Ordinance Code Update, CA two thousand nineteen dash zero one two. And I will direct it back over to staff to introduce us to the segment. Thank you.
Thank you, commission. And you, again, considered this at your workshop meeting last month. But the flood plane regulation and flood insurance program is a federal program that allows cities and counties to develop regulations that minimize or try to minimize damage from flooding so that FEMA is able to insure properties that are located in the flood plane should a flood occur. So it was initiated, I think, in the early seventies nationwide. Pasco's current flood plane ordinance was instituted in nineteen, in the early nineteen eighties. The last time the ordinance was amended was nineteen eighty-seven. The Department of Ecology, which is the overseer of the state program here in Washington State, provides audits of agencies, both city and county, to go through their permit records and flood zoning regulations and provides comments as a result of the audit. And they had noticed that in our ordinance, there were some revisions contained in the model federal ordinance that they wished us to implement. And as we talked about last month, the, actually, the revisions are pretty minor. It's mostly just housekeeping. They also reviewed our permit structures and how we determine whether properties are in the flood zone. They made some suggestions on that as well. But essentially, we're faced now with the public hearing for the flood plane or flood zone regulations and a commission recommendation to council. And given the minor nature of the And uh, given the minor nature of the proposed revisions, I I'm sure the commissioner's had a chance to review those. You'll probably agree with that assessment and uh, after conducting a public hearing. Staff would uh, appreciate the commission's uh, recommendation to move forward on and on to city council with the proposed revisions.
Thank you, uh, Rick, and so what I'd like to do is I'd like to open it up to public hearing and public comment. Right now and commissioners, if we could hold our comments and questions until after public comment. So any of the of you who are wishing to speak to this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Mary Mahoney. I live at five zero one seven West Pearl and I was um. I have asked on the uh, three parcels that are across the street from me. I live on Pearl. And I think that this code amendment is um, what the is applicable to. Um. I have questions about. Who, what, when and where. Development is going to occur on lot one, two and three? Has the Bureau of Reclamation been contacted? Are they involved? Um, has the easement on uh, lot one and two been addressed? I've asked this for a public disclosure request and not received any responses um. I have received some responses from the city clerk and uh. I can't open the files. On my computer. Um, I've received um. Corrupted files.
So Ms. Mahoney, I think what? If if the clerk is able to provide it to you in a hard copy, that might be the best way to do that?
I picked up the hard copy.
Okay, great, that's, so I'm uh.
It's, you can't read it. It's so faint. I've printed it out and there's nothing legible. I would like to know who is developing.
This is not an item for development. This is an item about flood pa- uh, Plane Management Ordinance Code Update. It's just a code update where we take a look at our city map and look at the areas that. Might fall into a floodplain and what the city can do to help. Uh, be prepared for if that were to happen. Um, so there's no development happening on this item. Does that make sense?
No, but I realize it's a step-by-step process and I know that the um. Us being the frogs, that the water's getting warmer and warmer. In our neighborhood and I would like to know. Through the public disclosure request or just a conversation actually with any of the city officials who are tax paid. By my tax dollars and all my neighbors. We'd like to know what's going on. Putting putting it in single, simple language. What y'all doing?
So it looks like our our maps for the city uh, have not been updated in quite some time and so for. Those people who might be at some unknown time in the future affected by. A flood, we need to update as a city. Um, our information that we have for residents as to what areas of the city might be um. Problematic for for floods, essentially is what this item is.
When I first started coming to these meetings, I did ask Mr. White and he did say, and it is on. Um, PSC dash TV, channel one nine one, and I can look on my records to see the date. That the uh, vegetation was going to be bulldozed in lot one and two.
Ms. Mahoney, do you have any comments about the code amendment, the updates to the code? Do you have any comments or concerns about the code specifically about the code?
Yeah, th- this all is in my mind.
Do you have a specific question about the code?
Um. Yeah, have you put in any consideration on um? The possibility of the um, dams being taken down? Have that, has that been addressed?
No.
Nope, okay, um. Has the um. Easement been addressed? That runs through lot one and two.
I I don't know.
The easement that's owned by the Corps of Engineers is in the floodway.
Have you had any kind of response from them?
No.
Will you be getting any response from them? And why not?
Because they haven't provided any.
So you build without that response?
We are not building anything. This is a code update. It's just to update the language that is within the city Pasco municipal code.
I realize that. I realize also too that I have asked so many questions, so many requests. And I have been given the runaround and I'm being given, give, I'm being given the runaround here for the record. At this meeting as well. And I will continue to request from any department, any um. Um, volunteer group. And I'll be on it. And you'll be maybe CC'd in or maybe someone will be contacting you. I guess that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you, and anyone else in the audience who'd like to come uh, up for this item and speak to? The code update on Flood Plane Management. Going once, going twice, going three times. Um, so no one's coming up from the audience. Uh, commissioners at this time, do you have some? Comments about this ordinance? Commissioner Compost, do you have something? Oh, Commissioner Bowers.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the map that's on, that's on the third page of our handout. And I'm having a lot of trouble distinguishing the A from the. The third category X five hundred. So I'm wondering if somehow someone could point out which part is A?
I would con- uh, echo that same concern. I had that same issue with distinguishing the blues.
Can the commission see the cursor?
Yeah.
On our, on our print, so commission, on our printouts, it just printed differently, but it's, if you can see it.
Yeah, the, this is the X five hundred, which is a five hundred year flood zone.
Okay.
And there's a little more up uh, north of the city limits and and as explained, as explained in the uh, staff report. Um, curiously, the federal insurance rate maps do not include. Um, some flood prevention. Uh, ish uh, tools or uh, initiatives that were put in place many years ago. Uh, for example, this this entire A zone here at the airport. That that is now the Squatcel Cooley is diverted very far north. Of where it it currently is and it flows all the way across to the Columbia River. So even though this is on the rate maps, the chances of flooding are zero. Uh, the problem is, is that the insurance program doesn't update the maps very often and it's a very expensive proposition. And when they do, it'll be removed, but right now we still have to use it as, you know, the truth, so. So it's regulated. The AE, this purple zone up here that indicates a some kind of a sheet flow, there's not a base flood elevation. And then this other um. Darker blue area is uh, also a flood. Uh, designated way, but it does not have a base flood elevation. So local jurisdictions, both city and county. You can tell that this is actually, most of this five hundred year zone is is in the county. Uh, but um. You have to just go by historical records, uh, you have to determine the elevation of the property. And uh. Then if a structure is being proposed for construction, you have to make sure that it's elevated a- a- according to the ordi- ordinance, at least one foot above. What you determined to be the base flood elevation. I don't know if that helps. Maybe it's too long of an answer.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers, yes. Thank you. So it's worse in the X zone than it is in the A?
It's better in the X zone.
It's better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners about this ordinance? Or questions at this time? I have closed the public comment part of. If you, that if you, you need to come to the podium and state.
Chair, chairwoman, she had five minutes. She had five minutes. I had my ti- I had my stopwatch.
All I wanna say is that.
Quick comment.
Lately, in the Seattle Times and even in the Tri-City Herald, there was a um. An abundance of articles about the uh, decimation of bird life. And that is, i- i- if I move from this place, which I probably will. It doesn't, you know, it's not for my benefit. I'm talking for the benefit of the community. When I spoke at a city council meeting, there was one member, and I'm sorry, I forgot his name, but he. He took his child on a uh, tour to see wildlife. And one of the educational um. New ways of teaching children is to take them to experience wildlife. While we're decimating our habitat and I wanna point out for the record. That this area that I live near, if I can see it on, right here. You have American eagles in there. You have, I just saw a white owl the other night. Um, red winged blackbirds, um, metal larks, every quail, pheasant. It it's in abundance. Now, I know it's kinda messy. It could be worked on, but we could create. A habitat there that everyone could use, the whole, the entire community. We could, we could be a um. Um, a first.
Ms. Mahoney.
Get written up in the Seattle Times.
Ms. Mahoney, if you'd come back to the the microphone.
I will, anyway.
I'd just like to say I appreciate your sentiments on that and the city is concerned with its natural habitats and environment and they. Want to protect those areas where there there are wildlife.
I haven't seen that. I respectfully to you, I have not seen that.
There are areas near Argent, uh, where CBC, where there is doe, where there are burrowing owls. And that's a protected habitat area, um, and around the road thirty six area and so. We do have some of those.
Well, three billion, three billion birds have disappeared. Since the eighties. You can look in the Seattle Times and view it. I mean, th- these are. Valid um, concerns, not just me, you know, living there. I'll probably move. I'll probably be, I mean, who knows what happens? But this is a concern. And this is vital to the planet, not just the community. So I have to get my legs in where I can because I have been cut off from speaking many times. And um, you know that, Mr. White.
So what I hear you saying is that you are concerned with natural habitats? And that's something you want to be taken into consideration for this flood zone management ordinance, is that correct? Okay.
And if people were to read in detail about plant um. Development in a floodplain area. It's really a bad idea. You did water testing. I've asked for the results on the water testing. Um, Mr. Ziobro sent me an email. I never got any results.
So Ms. Mahoney, I'd like to keep it to the flood zone ordinance. Um, and maybe later on you could follow up with the water testing.
Well, you get the idea.
I do, I appreciate that comment. That's a really um.
I'm not trying to sound angry. I'm trying to sound concerned.
And you do.
And um, it's not for me. It's for the community.
Thank you for your concern.
I am concerned very much so.
Are there any other? Comments on this issue from commissioners?
I had one question about the um. The fire. Um, the new fired uh. Firehouse that we are, we approved land for, uh. And I recall that, is that in a flood zone area? Or a previous flood zone area?
Uh, there might be a portion of some of that, the the parcel itself was about seventeen acres.
There was an awkward cutting on that parcel where there was a.
But it's.
Piece of it.
Yeah, the the fire station's not going there.
Okay, okay, so that wouldn't affect any of its building, okay.
If there aren't any more comments or concerns from Planning Commission, I would entertain a motion to. Close uh, the public hearing on this item and then. Entertain recommendation.
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Alright, so it's been closed and I'd entertain a motion. There was just a single one, okay. Thank you, so it was moved by Commissioner Jay Compost, seconded by Commissioner Bowers and it passed unanimously. And what will happen to this item? Will we see it November? Nope, it'll go to city council and then. Will.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I'm checking my uh, staff report, um. The uh, motion also included a recommendation for approval to city council.
I can amend my motion if Commissioner would like.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and amend my motion and I'll read it as follows. I move the planning commission, close the hearing on the revisions, the title twenty four floodplain and recommend approval by city council.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So let the record show that was moved by Commissioner Jay Compost, seconded by Commissioner Bowers and the motion passed unanimously. And it will go to city council.
Uh, at a workshop in October, um, and then uh. Perhaps the next council meeting for uh, official consideration.
Okay, thank you so much and we're on to item C zoning determination. Um, to determine zoning for newly annexed parcel one one nine five four one zero two three located at five thousand block of West Court Street for municipal purposes. And the master file is ZD two thousand nineteen dash zero zero two and staff, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, uh, Adam Chair and Commissioner. This is a parcel that's uh, located just on the south side of Court Street. You can see at the bottom of the screen if. If Marie Street went through, it would be right at the bottom of the site itself. Um, the city owns this five acre parcel. Um, it's not yet incorporated into the city limits. The city limits, well, I'll get to that graphic in a minute, but the city limits are to the uh, east. And the uh, south. Um. The proposal is uh, for a fire station uh, on the north half of the property. And uh, the uh, requested zoning, which needs to be determined prior to the city annexing the property, is for. Um, RS one, so. Again, you can see the uh, graphics with the uh, current land uses in the area. The existing county zoning. Is Office on the north half and RS twenty on the south half. The proposal is to provide a zoning determination of RS one, which is a minimum lot size of ten thousand. Square feet as opposed to twenty thousand square feet now in the county. The city intends to uh, provide sewer through the future Marie Street right of way on the south end of the parcel. And that would not only allow access to this south half, but also uh, would allow. The uh, potential of uh, up to seven lots to be sewered and developed once the fire station is constructed. So all of this uh, would need to take place prior to annexation. Here's a graphic that shows the. It's not final, of course, but it's a tentative lot layout. You can see the Marie Marie Street extension here, uh, graphic of the fire station and then the. and then the lot configuration right here. This is an easement that goes through a small cul-de-sac with sewer service for the proposed fire station. I'm sure the commission's aware of this large vacant field here. It was farmed up until just a little bit ago. I don't know what happened this year. Um, it's not being farmed now, but um, it's pretty much given that the owner will probably be subdividing that in the near future if he's not farming it, and um, you can see from the aerial, well, I guess it's not farmed there either, uh, so that was a few years ago. But uh anyway, the zoning determination would allow uh the annexation to go forward, which is a consideration by council. Uh, although Washington State has some strange annexation laws, uh when a municipality owns property, annexation actually is fairly straightforward. It's simply is done by an approved ordinance through council. So with that, uh, Commission, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any commissioners have comments at this point or questions for Staff?
A couple of questions, uh, just about the history. I recall back in March, there was a hearing regarding uh, property north of here that was to be annexed for a fire station. Uh, this must be a replacement for that, or uh, what was, what was the, the happenings that, that occurred?
There, there were some sewerage issues with the property to the north, and um, I think the fire department just determined that this was actually a much superior site, uh, than, than. It was somewhere between fifty-two and forty-eight there on the north side of Court. So yeah, I, I think they just thought that this, and it became available. So I think they just believed it was a much better site. It allows better access, and you don't have to go through residential areas to get in, fire trucks in and out.
Sure. Um, yeah, I, you know, in, in terms of the, the zoning designation, I think this is a very reasonable plan. I know we're not talking specifically about the, the fire department uh plan tonight. Uh, you know, I, I'd like to see, uh, you know, commercial uses preserved to the greatest extent that we can along Court Street. Um, I know we're not talking about that tonight, but um, thank you for the, the background history, and um, this seems like a, a reasonable zoning designation.
So for clarification, we're just looking to rezone that um northern parcel only this evening? Or the entire?
The entire thing, a- and remember, um, things like fire stations, government offices, uh, there are a special permit regardless of zoning. So whether it's on commercial, residential, or industrial, it still requires a special permit.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions that we have right now for, for concerns?
I just, uh, quick clarification, the fire station is only going on the north part of that property, and then the south part, it looks like it's uh divided into lots. Is the plan to sell those to private developers, or?
Yeah, it's not to market the lots, but um, the, the tentative lot layout is just for the city to understand what the potential may be, and then preferably sell it to a single developer.
Gotcha. And that would be a through street from the south end of the fire department through that cul-de-sac? Is that, am I looking at that correct, or it would not go through?
No, it, it would, it, it would not go through. So this is, it would dead-end right here. Or, I'm scared, I'm sorry, right here.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, I see what you're saying. Um, any other commissioners have something to say? Otherwise, I'll open it up to public comment. Commissioner Bowers has something?
Thank you. So ultimately, the only access is gonna be through Court Street? For the fire station?
For the fire station.
Is that unusual? No.
No.
Cause like you think about the one on Road sixty-eight, you can only get to it from Road sixty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to this item, item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Going, okay, come forward, please.
Okay, so, not to bring it up again, but on the code amendment, the floodplain management, and I'm taking it with this zoning determination, there will be a meeting prior to the City Council for the recommendation and approval? Is that correct?
So tonight, what we're doing is we are uh, looking at this special permit to rezone it to RS one residential. And then, then it goes to City Council if we approve the recommendation um, for their final approval.
But I'm understanding there's a meeting prior to the City Council?
That's this evening, that's this meeting. Yes.
For, for just this item?
Just for this item, what, whatever's on the public hearing, so this is one of the items of five.
So.
So on the agenda that, the meeting agenda, we have, we've gone through two items. We're now on the third item, which is this zoning determination for this um, uh, this fire station, and.
There's no more meetings in October is what I'm asking.
Oh. There, there are, there's a City Council public workshop happening this, this month, I believe, next Monday, correct?
Monday is a regular council meeting, so that would be the twenty-first, so the twenty-eighth would be a workshop. Uh, I think November fourth is the next regular council meeting, November eleventh would be a workshop. No, November twelfth would be a workshop, the eleventh is Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Okay, twenty-first, twenty-eighth in October.
So Ms. Mahoney.
November fourth.
Do you have a comment about this item? Okay, thanks. Alright, going once? Going twice, going three times? Um, any further discussion amongst commissioners, then I would entertain two motions to get this going where it needs to go. I move to adopt findings of fact and conclusions therefrom as contained in the October seventeenth, twenty-nineteen staff report. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Right? I move, based on the findings of fact and conclusions, as adopted, the Planning Commission recommend the City Council zone the Court Street Fire Station number eighty-four annexation area to RS one as depicted on the proposed zoning map, Exhibit one, attached to the October seventeenth, twenty-nineteen Planning Commission report. Hey, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, so let the record show it was moved by Commissioner Bowers both times, seconded by Commissioner A. Compo both times, and it passed unanimously both times. So on to, it's on to City Council after this, is my guess. And then we, okay, we'll go on to our next public hearing item, which is item D, special permit for the Franklin County Museum Annex, SP two thousand nineteen dash zero-two, which we've seen a few times before us. Um, Staff, if you wanna say anything else about this?
Uh, uh, yes, uh, good evening again, members of the Planning Commission. Yes, you, you've seen this quite a few times. Uh, actually, I think the first time was back in November of twenty eighteen. Um, the only change is this item's been continued a few times to allow staff and the applicant some time to uh come up with a site plan, um, that was a little bit more uh, uh complimentary to the surrounding neighborhood, including the downtown business area. Um, very happy to announce that we, we have done that. Um, I apologize for not having the prior site plan, but this one, you can see a significant, they've addressed all of the concerns that were in prior uh staff reports with the uh, these, the, the large setback has been decreased, the parking has been removed. Uh, there's been an agreement reached with the business to the immediate south to utilize their parking lot in case it's needed. Um, so there's been no, uh, no big changes to the staff report, other than the approved conditions that this site layout is, is, is what's built, along with meeting the other requirements of the past municipal code. Um, the applicant is here, in case you have any questions about um, the uh special permit. Um, but other than that, uh, no, no further comment from Staff.
Thank you, Jacob, and we'll have the applicant come forward, state your name and address if you'd like to say anything else about the item. No? Okay, well, we're, I think, I, at least I personally am excited about this moving forward. Um, and do we have an, anybody who has questions for the applicant?
I had, I had one question about, um, one of the observations was the Rite Aid has agreed to allow for parking, and that sounds great. I, I'm just curious about, um, nothing's ever permanent in Rite Aid. You know, what about like five years from now, Rite Aid goes out of business, will this put a, will this put a crunch on parking? Cause maybe the new owners won't agree to this, or maybe they want a different use of that contingency been thought about, or? Um, just curious, cause you know, it's great, it's always great, but then, um, you know, things change, right? And, and the new manager at Rite Aid says, I don't like this anymore, or whatever. Um, so I'm just curious if there's a contingency, or maybe, maybe it's not a big deal because it's gonna be rarely used anyway.
I'm Richard Shireman, Director of the Museum, and uh, thanks for the question, Commissioners, and for all of your patience and uh, the help, uh, Jacob and Rick have gone through this process. Um, uh, directly to the concern, there are, um, I think it's twenty-two spaces right along Bonneville, which is considerable in addition to uh the over seventy that are there at Rite Aid. Um, uh, I can't speak to long-term trends at Rite Aid, but with what's on Bonneville along Fourth, and there, there is parking in the rear, um, that we would have for staff, and certainly make available for public use as well, should that come to pass. And so, uh, we think, uh, we do have big plans, and I'd like to tell you, we would like to have considerably more for uh, you know, public events, uh, but uh, given the nature of the location, uh, we are, uh, we're pleased with this uh outcome and think it would accommodate what is reasonably intended to happen.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers, did you have a question for the applicant?
Um, this is uh probably more for Staff, um, and, and congratulations on this rendering. It really is very complimentary. And uh, I know it's been a long process, I, I've watched this through its iterations. In reading some of the meeting minutes, there were uh concerns about alleyway uh access. Uh, just north of here is a parking lot that I believe Terographics uh owns. Um, and they, they may have entrance uh access that way. Any concerns today about these upgrades and, and alleyway access moving forward? It looks like there's sufficient space, but I was just, uh, interested. Yeah, the, the applicant will, will have to make the uh, meet the requirements of municipal code in terms of what may be required, uh, in terms of improvements to the alleyway, um, in front of their property. Um, other than that, we, Staff didn't notice any uh above and beyond challenges with their proposed employee parking in the backside of the, of the facility itself.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Bowers?
Thank you. I, I also think this is a huge improvement over the last plans. And I know that you attended the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. And I was just, I don't recall whether we talked at all about the annex design there. So I was just curious and wanted to make a recommendation, let that be shared with the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Any others? And at this time, if somebody from the audience would like to come forward and make a comment about this particular annexation item? Museum annex item, not annexation, excuse me. I don't wanna get anybody's feathers ruffled with that word. No, going once, going twice, going three times, alright, so if there's no other questions for uh Staff or the applicant, let's entertain a motion, two of them.
I move to close the public hearing for the special permit on the proposed location for an annex building for the Franklin County Museum in the R-three medium-density city residential zoning district.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move the Planning Commission recommend to City Council the adoption of the proposed special permit, SP twenty nineteen dash zero-zero-two as contained in the October seventeenth, twenty nineteen Planning Commission staff report.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So let the record show that both motions were passed by Jay Compo, seconded by uh Commissioner Cochrane, and passed unanimously. So they will go on to City Council, and then that moves us to item D. No, excuse me, we just finished D. Item E, CDBG, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four Tri-Cities Consolidated Plan and Elements, Master File BGAP two thousand nineteen dash zero-zero-six. And Staff, I will turn it over to you, please.
Thank you, uh, Commission, and I just want to introduce Angie V. Pittman. She is our block grant administrator. And every five years, we do what's called a consolidated plan in cooperation with Richland and Pass, uh, uh, Richland and Kennewick. Um, so it's, uh, as you, yeah, if you've had a chance to read through the, the plan, there's a ton of information in it. And I would encourage you to keep it handy, because you can always refer to it when you need a statistic or two to impress either your friends or to make a point. But um, there's a lot of work that goes in with this, a lot of public participation, at least attempts at public participation. And I think Angie's probably the best person to uh give the Commission a rundown on the overview.
Thank you. Um, earlier this year, we contracted with Cloud Burst Group to prepare this five-year um, con- consolidated plan update. Ours is going to expire at the end of um, twenty nineteen. So um, briefly, uh, it's one of the HUD requirements to receive our block grant funds. So um, we can, we uh, joined together with the uh cities of Kennewick and Richland to do a regional plan. So it kinda cuts down the work for all of us. Um, it's required to receive the funding. Um, included in this five-year con-plan is also our first-year annual action plan supplement, which was before you, earlier this year, like, I think it was July, June and July. And so it's already been, the work plan's been approved by Council, so that work's included in here. Um, also, as part of this work, uh, consolidated plan, citizens' participation is mandatory. So there is, um, our citizens' participation plan is included in here, and we had a lot of outreach, um, efforts to engage the community to get input, um, in preparation of this plan. The needs analysis, market analysis, um, and uh, just, there's a ton of data in there. Also included in this is a, an analysis of impediments to fair housing, and um, not much has changed between last year's, or the last analysis of impediments, or even last year's five-year plan. We have um, pretty much the same needs in our area, probably a little bit more focus and emphasis on the need for affordable housing. Um, but pretty much the same, it's, it's pretty much status quo for uh, our community. So as um, a result, the goals for the consolidated plan remain the same. The strategies may change some to meet some other needs. You, we've been working for the last five years on the same type of goals. So we will continue doing what we've been doing, um, and increasing and preserving affordable housing, and community, neighborhood, and economic development, and then homeless intervention and public service activities. Uh, all of those goals that we've established are based on the needs analysis and the market analysis that was put together by our consultant, um, together with the public input that we gained from the focus groups. So our annual estimated funds is based on our, our prior year. And this is information that was already presented back in June and July. And it will go into this consolidated plan and annual action plan and projected out for the next five years. So this first screen is just basically our estimated annual. And then the second screen is what we expect over the next five years. And like I said, there's a lot of information included in there, so if there's any questions I can answer, um, with each element of this consolidated plan, our consultant was kind enough to put together a summary or overview to kinda condense it down. But if there's something I can't answer, we can always reach out to him and.
This is condensed?
Well, that's actually, behind those summaries are the, is the full plan, so, yeah. Well, that's actually behind those summaries are the, uh, is the full plan, so, yeah. The first page is a condensed.
Well, it's clear that a lot of thought and time and consideration and public outreach go into this. Um, do commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Bowers, go for it.
Thank you. Angie, it's great to see you. Um, just had a few questions, um. I was looking at the groups that were reached out to, to conduct the needs assessment. I was surprised and perhaps I missed it. Not to see Union Gospel Mission mention here? As one of the organizations, it seemed unusual just-
Oh, yeah, what you see here as far as the organizations-
Yeah.
That attended is not all that was reached out to.
Oh, oh, that's just who attended.
We sent a huge, a massive, um, direct mail out and email notice to all the nonprofit stakeholders and groups in our area, plus put it in the newspaper and-
Right. Okay, here it is, cause it says, um, at the bottom of page eight, it says who participated in the process. And-
Right.
It doesn't list them, so that was just, did I miss that?
No, they just didn't, um, participate. They didn't have any input in the process.
Okay, that was surprising and, um, I wondered also if any veterans groups had been consulted?
There were a number of veterans groups that were, that were, um, providing information in the focus groups.
Okay. And, uh, 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 oh, I also noticed that none of the meetings took place in Pasco.
Our consultant had two, um, meetings, community meetings scheduled in our contract. Kennewick and Richland jumped up and said, let's do it over there. Under twenty twenty hindsight, we'll have a third meeting and have one over here. But the same players showed up in both locations, pretty much both times, so.
Yeah, that just seems like a huge oversight. Not to, not to have your, like, we're the, you know, the stepchild who gets ignored constantly. Do you have a peer in the other cities?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for this packet, I will keep it close, there's a lot of great, uh, information in here. One thing I was curious was, um, the use of community block grant funds downtown. Now, uh, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, we've utilized those funds for downtown redevelopment. And are we leveraging future funds for that? I just wanted to get my memory refreshed again. Um, how does that impact the next five years moving forward and, and those allocations?
Um, you must be talking about the section one oh eight loan.
Okay, yes.
And how that impacts it is basically a portion of our future grant funds are going to be reserved to repay that debt.
Okay.
And it's, it's not a significant amount.
Okay. Okay, great. Yeah, thank you so much, um, just understanding how that was impacted at all. Uh, and, um, i- is it ever a challenge, you know, we, we have the same goals before us, but is it ever a challenge to figure out how to effectively address those challenges and assess whether what we're doing now is meeting, um, our goals? Um, there seem to be similar programs year to year. Um, you know, how, how do you evaluate year to year whether we're, we're meeting our targets based on where the funding's going?
Um, this consolidated plan kinda lays it all out. It isn't fully populated yet, but it will be, um, when we start filling in all the numbers. But each of those projects, um, that we've done in the past have a number of accomplishments and it's all entered into IDIS, which is the HUD tracking system that is a direct line to, um, Congress. And so at the end of the year, I think one of the documents on the front page was the CAPR, the Consolidated Annual Plan Evaluation Report. So at the end of our first year, we'll complete a CAPR that says how many of the numbers that we proposed, how many houses to be rehabbed, how many individuals to be helped, how many, um, jobs created will be measured and, and reported by our recipients and sub-receipients. That goes into that plan, it rolls up into the five-year plan.
Yeah, thank you again so much and, uh, really appreciate all the effort that's gone into this so far, thank you.
I just had a question about, within the executive summary, it says, uh, the, uh, overview of, of objectives is that affordable housing is listed as number one. Uh, there are three that are listed, community development and public services. Is that the priority in that order, one, two and three, uh, that came out of the public outreach process?
No, they're not prioritized like that.
Okay.
They're just numbered that way to be consistent with the prior year, um, five-year plan. Um, they're all high priority.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other commissioners who have, um, any questions, comments? Commissioner A. Campos, uh, J. Campos?
Yeah, just to refresh your, Rick, um, several months back, when we were doing the first round of block grant stuff, you'd mentioned about how we have an issue where, uh, Habitat for Humanity is our only builder that kinda receives funding from this. Is this kinda the same, is this gonna help bolster that? Maybe attract other builders or other programs that would?
Um, they will, the, the Ha- Habitat is the only community housing development organization. It, and that does hamper us, um, not just us in Pasco, but everywhere. Uh, and, uh, no, this, this does not impact that.
Okay.
Uh, we're still hampered.
So Habitat for Humanity is not a CHDO?
They're not, or they, excuse me, they are.
They are.
They are, but they're the only one.
They are, are.
And so if they're doing a project, then there's no one to step in and do the next project when we have funding available.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? We have not taken public comment yet, so if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to comment about this item. Doesn't look like we have any takers. Um, anything else that we wanna wrap up about the CDBG item? Doesn't look like it. I would entertain a motion, um. There's a lot, I hope somebody can find the motion.
Move the public hearing be closed and, and five-year consolidated plan and elements be forwarded to the City Council approval at the next available workshop as submitted or amended.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, any opposed? Right, let the record show it was moved by Commissioner J. Campos, seconded by Commissioner Meyer and the motion passed unanimously. And will be moved to public workshop for City Council. And that takes us to our other business. And that is the comprehensive plan update and is that going to be Jacob Gonzalez?
Hi, good evening again, members of the planning commission. This is, uh, another update to the comprehensive plan process. Uh, in front of you, there are four more elements of the comprehensive plan that we wanted to share and distribute with you and we wel- again, welcome any feedback or comment or questions about, um, the parks and open space, resource lands, public services and the critical areas and shoreline elements of the comprehensive plan. All of these ones aren't as lengthy as some of the others. Uh, part of that is because these reference existing city documents or plans. For instance, the Parks and Forestry Plan is referenced, a lot of the data from that plan that was adopted, I believe in twenty sixteen, is included in the park and open space element. And with the critical areas and shoreline, there was elements of the, um, shoreline master planning program that was done recently, I believe, um, that are included in reference in that document. So that allows this to be a little bit shorter. I apologize for the maps. I realize what these things, maps are probably the easiest thing to look at and, and to, uh, kinda correspond the language to the visual. Um, there will be a map, uh, folio, uh, included with the comprehensive plan that will have maps associated with, with each of these elements or appropriate elements. So I apologize for those not being in here, but, uh, th- they will be available, uh, towards the end of the comprehensive plan process.
Thank you. So taking any questions or comments right now from commissioners about this item, uh?
Yeah, uh, I never thought about it and I'm pretty pumped to see like how much acreage is in the city for special use. Two hundred and seventy-seven point six eight special use acreage. That's kinda neat.
Okay, Commissioner Bowers?
So Jacob, I saw under parks and open space, um, all the sites that were listed. Did we ever figure out the name of that little plot that's on Lu- on Lewis? Off Main, northeast of the Lewis Street Overpass?
Remember and-
I was wondering if it was in there? The Nameless Park.
Yeah, I apologize for not, for not knowing the name.
Make sure, make sure we put that in there and we gotta give it a name.
Yeah.
If it doesn't have one.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers, for not letting that get forgotten. Letting that be forgotten, okay. Any other comments or questions for, about this item from commissioners? Looking down the line, I don't see anybody, anybody in the audience who'd like to come s- well, it's not a public hearing, but. Doesn't look like we have anything for you. Commissioner J. Campos had a light bulb turn on, I saw it.
Shoreline. Got anything outside of what's been listed here that helped you develop and come up with the shoreline plan for this?
I, I'm sorry, one, one more time?
The shoreline, the critical area in shoreline, was there anything outside of what's listed here that helped you compile?
Uh, not, not to my knowledge, um, but I'll be honest, our consultant was, was heavily involved with this portion of the element. Um, but, uh, I, I can make sure and ask before this is adopted, um, or recommended by the planning commission, uh, that I can get any additional information. And, and when this is eventually shown to everyone, uh, in a full format, um, you'll be able to ask more, more questions of them as well about what all went into the development or the inclusion of, of these specific elements.
And this particular consultant was in fact the consultant that did our twenty sixteen shoreline master program. And s- and so they're very familiar and they did a really good job.
And that was some really dense reading for a while. Um, okay, so, any other concerns, comments? Are you only looking, Jacob, for number one and number two and, and as of right now?
No, I apologize for the other two not, not being identified on there, but it, all four, all the four of the elements that you have in your packet, we welcome any comments and then we'll be able to address those as we move forward with the comprehensive time process.
Okay.
I had a question on the, um, the fire. So it looks like the new fire station we just talked about, another item, is on here. Um, but I'm trying to understand the difference between the existing stations and the proposed map. It looks like they're the same, or is it just that one is black because it's not there? Is that the differences, they all look like we're planning for a six-minute response time. But the proposed one is that, I just don't, I was trying to understand what the difference between the two maps was.
Yeah, and, and this will be a map that is, that's updated and, and it's got some more clarity and it- when we get towards finalizing the document, so I apologize for kind of the, the draft, uh, the format of this.
One other, one other clarification, then City Council, I guess, is having a hearing about the water park, potential water park usage. Would that fall into here if there's a decision made at some point in time about that?
It, it could be included as, as a reference, um, so, I just was curious.
So I have a question about, Commissioner Cochr- Cochran brought something to mind for me about the fire and that is when that six-minute, um, response time is measured, is that just measured, uh, by time and mileage, or does it also factor in potential areas of traffic?
They, I, I think the algorithm that our, our GIS folks use, um, is actually quite sophisticated. They take into account congestion and delay on the roadways, so it's, it's almost more of a, a modeling analysis of sorts, but they take that into account. So you got your, uh, we, we, we have vehicle counts, right, that are done periodically, so we know what the capacity ratios are like, there's delay, um, factors that are included with, or are included with the analysis of, we already have this amount of vehicles or not and this is what the delays are. And so there's a timing algorithm that's added to that and I apologize for not knowing all of the math behind that, but there's a pretty sophisticated algorithm behind the, how they come up with that six-minute response time.
Don't beat yourself up about it, you guys retain a lot of information that I don't know that we'd be able to hold.
The, uh, and the, the fire response times have been done in detail by the fire master plan, uh, which is a backup document that underlies this, this public service element. Um, and so they were done and a- and actually it shows some, uh, discrepant, or some deficiencies a- as you get further west, uh, particularly of Road sixty-eight and north, northwest of, of sixty-eight.
If there are any other things that come up between now and time that we finalize this comprehensive plan update, the best way to get ahold of city staff is to call or email?
Yeah, yeah, please do.
Okay. So if something comes up, you know what to do. Alright, any other items or are we done for the evening?
That's, that's all for me.
Okay, entertain a motion to close this meeting?
I make a motion to close the October seventeenth, twenty nineteen planning commission meeting.
Taken.
All those in favor? I was just formalizing it, you didn't have to. Alright, thank you, everybody. Commissioner Bowers?